One.
Good evening, welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 1st, 2022. Everyone will please rise for the pledges and then followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. And jumping back to Ms. Hilbriks starting point here, may I please call roll for us?
Councilman Delagarese?
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tim Solis will join us in just a few minutes. Councilman Crocker?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Councilman Young?
Here.
Councilman Lofgren?
Here.
Mayor, Mayor Bocknight?
Here.
You even threw James off with that one. Just trying to keep you on your toes, Mr. Foot. Okay, do we have any announcements or reminders?
No, sir.
Nope. Public recognition, we have Keep Victoria Beautiful Beautification Award.
Yeah, last Kristi Euchre to come up? Or Jonas, I'm not sure who.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I promise we didn't plan our outfit. I am here today to recognize our February Business Beautification Award winner, and I have Beth Kuntz, our Vice Chair of Keep Victoria Beautiful, here to announce that. I'll go ahead and say howdy, representing the colors here.
Howdy.
Howdy. My name is Beth Kuntz, and I currently am a proud, proudly serve as the Vice Chair of the Keep Victoria Beautiful Board. We invite community members to nominate businesses that they feel embody KVB's mission of enhancing livability of Victoria by beautification through a sense of pride and ownership. Each month, we present our award to a deserving nominee. Our winner for the month of February is Twice Blessed Showroom, a nonprofit antique and consignment shop featuring jewelry, handbags, glassware, and vintage decor, and really more. Twice Blessed is an outreach shop of the First United Methodist Church, which opened in 2005. Managed and operated by volunteers, Twice Blessed takes gently-used treasures and turns them into cash for local charities while serving the needs of the community. Their location is in a highly-trafficked downtown area off a main street, and it stands out with its beautiful, well-maintained flowerbeds and the clean, welcoming storefront, which was specifically pointed out in this month's nomination. Board President Marcia Kaufman, a master gardener herself, along with her husband John, put considerable time and effort into maintaining the landscaping. And if the wonderfully-kept storefront and the landscaping weren't enough, Twice Blessed keeps usable items out of our landfill, so Twice is nice. It is my pleasure to present the Business Beautification Award for the month of February to Twice Blessed Showroom. And please help me welcome Ms. Marcia, who is the Twice Blessed Board Chair, to say a few words about their great organization.
I think Beth pretty much summed it up. We're all volunteers, no one gets paid, but we give all of the proceeds back to the community. We keep it very local. All I can say is come in and support our outreach of First United Methodist Church. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Mr. Garza, do you have any others?
No, sir.
Well, I have two tonight. I want to recognize Mr. Jesus Garza. He was recently elected as Chairman of the Board for Texas Municipal Retirement System. You got that right?
T M R S.
And also, at the same time, he got nominated and became a member, a Director of the Texas Lyceum Board, or the Texas Lyceum. And I just want to, the Texas Lyceum's a really, really big deal. Tell you a little bit about the Lyceum. It's a statewide board, bringing together diverse opinions to address national and state issues through civil discourse, emphasizing constructive private sector, public sector, and individual responses. Responses. So he just got, I guess, voted into the 2022 class of Directors, and great job.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right, if there's no other public and employee recognitions, we'll go to items from Council.
I have two.
Yes, ma'am.
The first one is, is it just me, or it seems like when we honor the Texas flag, that the wind is coming from the north and it's got the flag going the wrong direction? And I just wondered if we could maybe have a challenge to find another direction for the flag, or at least have it be still. Is it just me, or it seems like it's flying the wrong way?
I didn't think about it.
Yeah. We'll look at, we've noticed, we've noticed it too. We'll try and do what we can to change the direction of the wind.
I thought by saying with the wind coming from the north, that's the wrong way it should be coming. Secondly, I have a question for our city attorney of, how does the state camping law now impact our city ordinance? And just, could you give us a little update on that?
Yes, ma'am. As you all remember, that several years ago, we adopted an anti-camping ban in the city limits related to camping on public property in residential areas. At the last state legislative session last year, the state legislature adopted what was known then as House Bill 1925. It's now codified into the Penal Code. And what it specifically says is it is unlawful for a person to camp on, in any public space, in any public space. And so it's broader than our, our city regulation, and it specifically preempts regulations like our city code that are less restrictive than, than that the state law is. And so as a consequence, I know that there have been some issues in some neighborhoods lately where there has been some camping activity going on. That is all now regulated under state law, not city code.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? I have one item. Mr. Garza, would you be able to give us just a brief ARPA fund update?
Absolutely. The American Rescue Plan Act funds has obviously been a topic of discussion for, for what seems forever now, but forever ago now. Our last conversation about it was in September. And just for a little bit of history, when this, when this first came up, we had a conversation about what we, what we would like to spend the money on. Council ultimately with, through a recommendation with city staff, came up with categories, those being loss of revenue, organizational needs, broadband, utility infrastructure, tourism and travel, economic development, and community grants. And it took us a couple of months to make a recommendation, and ultimately, when we did, the direction from, from Council was, was a hybrid, meaning we actually committed close to $5 million. That being $3 million for loss of revenue, $1 million for organizational needs, which some of that we'll actually consider later, because some of the organizational needs was for facility improvements. So the facility master plan, though, you'll consider later, some of that funding is coming from that $1 million. We allocated $100,000 for broadband, $500,000 for tourism and travel, $100,000 under economic development, which was Innovation Collective. And we just put a, a number out there, $650,000 for utility improvements. Now, all in all, we are scheduled to receive $14.5 million, and we've only spent a little over four. And so we have more or less $9.5 million that we still need to have a conversation about. But the convert, but the direction that we received from Council was, let's get a big-picture focus on all of the different projects that we want to tackle. And specifically broadband, we undertook that study. That study was not completed until September of last year, and Derek is finalizing the recommendation there, and you'll hear a little, you'll hear a little more about that in executive session today. On the utility side, there was two large projects that we had recommended we look into, one of those being the SCADA upgrade, which was a big lesson learned stemming from the winter freeze from last year. And then also the INI study because of issues at the regional wastewater treatment plant when it rains a lot. And so to that end, in September, we, in late September, we actually issued a notice to proceed to Garver to help design the SCADA upgrade for us. We had a kickoff meeting in October, and we're expected to receive that final report in March. As it relates to the INI study, we issued that RFQ in October. That deadline was in December, and we're currently in scope and contract negotiations with the selected firm and expect to also wrap that up this month. And so I think we are getting very close to being able to come back and having a public conversation with you on the options, the cost of these different things that Council wanted us to look at. And so that's where we're at with that part of it. There's also been some, you know, sidelined conversations on some other things, such as, you know, I have recommended, when we spoke about Public Safety Headquarters facility at our last workshop, allocating $1 million from ARPA to help towards any site acquisition or site improvements associated with that facility, which ironically, you'll learn more about that project here tonight as well. And so I envision us being in a better position, if not at the end of this month, for sure in March, to be able to revisit a public conversation about how we want to spend that remaining $9.5 million.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other items from Council? Seeing none, we'll close that and go to Citizens Communication. I have first up Max Whipple.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Max Whipple, Vice President of Development with the NRP Group. I am here today relating to a cooperation agreement between the city and the Texas Home Collaborative. We did brief the Victoria Housing Finance Corporation on this resolution a couple of weeks ago, and actually just came from the Victoria Housing Authority meeting about five minutes ago, relating to that cooperation agreement. That said, I, I do want to thank the city. You know, we've been working with Mike and Jesus for close to two years on this development, and we are just about ready to get our financing that'll allow us to start construction this summer. So it's been a long time in the making, but I know everyone here at the NRP team is very excited to see this element get going, and we really appreciate the work of the City Council, the city staff. I mentioned this at the Housing Finance Corporation meeting as well, but we work with a number of municipalities across the state, and from our engineers to our architects, to all of our subconsultants, they've, they've all said that they've had nothing but a great experience working with the city staff here in Victoria. So just appreciate all of your time and happy to answer any questions when the item comes up, if there are any. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whipple. Mr. Michael Vondero?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Executive Secretary and Mayor Pro Tim. Do I need to wait for you? You can sit, sit down first. Thank you, and congratulations on the city manager for getting that award in 2022. There's a problem with DWIs. My neighbor, he's on his sixth DWI, and it's like, how many DWIs do you have to get to go to jail? I mean, he's got two convictions in Victoria, he's got a third felony conviction in Port LeVaca, and the last three months, he's got three cases, one in DeWitt County and two in Port LeVaca. I don't have to worry about him bothering me anymore because he's in the Victoria County Jail, but I sure wish prosecutors could be a little more strict on DWIs. You know, I mean, how many does it take? And we have people getting DWIs and getting in accidents and damaging families and, you know, and it seems like they just get a free pass. You know, and the first two are just free passes and, you know, and I understand everyone needs a break, and then we just had a DWI where someone was, had someone under 15. If you have someone under 15, a lot of people don't know this, but that's a felony. And if you have a kid, that's another felony. And, you know, if you're a lawyer, you're probably gonna lose your law license and be working as a paralegal, you know? And I wish district attorneys could be more strict on DWI. I mean, because there comes a time, after six DWIs, you're not learning, and that's the way it is. And as far as the camping, I don't have a problem with them camping at Christ Kitchen and putting up tents, but those six TVs gotta go, you know? They've been there a long time, and they got this cord, it looks like it's 10 miles long, it's from one house all the way to them, and cars are running over it, and, you know, it rains and stuff, and I wish someone could do something to make that extension cord more safe. It looks like 20 extension cords are, are put together, and there's no way that can meet code, but I wish they could put something over that extension cord or, or something. And that's about it. Thanks, and have a good evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Pickens?
Good evening. Just wanted to, to basically give you guys an update that because of this sub-freezing weather, that we will have a, another warming center at our Savior's Lutheran Church will begin on Thursday and run through Sunday nights from 5:00 PM until 8:00 AM for the overnight warming center for our folks that are out there, either who are homeless and don't have anywhere to go, or for people, we've helped also people who have houses and apartments but did not have any heat. So we've given out blankets and food as well to them. So I just wanted to give you guys an update on that. The one thing that I have not heard about, and the reason why I wanted to come and speak to you, is that in that month, in that funding that our city manager spoke about, was a presentation that was done on July the 20th, where it gave kind of an overview and talks about those categories. And one of the categories that has not been addressed yet is the category of the community grants. Back in, after May, between May and July, nonprofits were asked to, to put out, like, it was some kind of a link that we went to and said what our organization was, what we wanted to be able to accomplish with the funding, and how much funding and the timeframe we would need. And so basically, I'm just requesting that if, at some point in the very near future, we could address that. There were, on the slide, there were, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, Billy T. Catan, Christ Kitchen, Habitat for Humanity, Humility Project, Meals on Wheels, Midcoast Family Services, Salvation Army, and South Side Coalition were addressed on that particular slide. I don't know if there were any other organizations that were also included in that conversation, but like I said, I would like to, to at least stress that as, as things move on and as people are noticing about encampments, that we do have people who are interested in trying to basically keep people from having to live on the street. I know we have the great projects with Odom Street and other Housing Authority projects that are coming down the pike, but that's two years from now, and people need help now. So trying to bridge, find a, a way to bridge from being homeless to being housed, and so that is one of the things I'm trying to focus on. I appreciate Mayor Bocknight and the manager for being on a call that I had on the 20th, and if anybody would like a copy of that, that presentation, I'd be more than happy to email it to all of you or any of you that are interested in it. It was an initial conversation, not a finalized schedule, so like I said, this is what I came here to talk about, and so I really appreciate it because our friends are very important, whether they're housed or not.
Thank you. Ms. Renya? Mr. Renya?
Hello, Council, Mayors. How y'all doing? I agree totally with Ms. Pickens. I am one of the campers there at Christ Kitchen, as, as well as a few others. As far as the, getting the housing and, or if we did get a place, or if we had a place for homeless to, to go to, you know, that's what we try to push, that's what we want to push for. And as far as the city ordinance goes, as, as far as like laws, cops and all that coming down there, and just really, like, as far as us there at Christ Kitchen, we do have permission to be there. You know, it's been done, you know, laws have been called down there. We have been through this whole situation to where they're trying to run us off multiple times, and with the permission of the, the owners of the property, we, we are able to be there, and I believe the laws understand that too as well. But I agree totally with Ms. Pickens, as if, if we can push and push for the, a place for us to be, I mean, I really don't see any, any problem with us being there. Yes, as far as the extension cord goes, yes, he's right. I totally agree with that thing, but it's not, you know, nothing big. But as far as, yes, that's what we're pushing for, and if anything, we're willing to do any, and everything that we need to, to get that going. And as far as all of us, there's some of us who do want a second chance in life, and we're just shunned by the world because of our appearance and by, you know, the position that we're in now. So, and it's kind of hard to get back at life due, for the fact of situations like this, you know? As far as get, trying to get jobs, that's what we're pushing for. Ms. Pickens and all them, I totally thank them, you know, we would be like, actually nothing without them, Ms. Pickens, Ms. Kim, Ms. Sarah, everybody, you know, who has been helping. And of course, Christ Kitchen. If there's any way possible, you know, you know, that we can push and push for a place, you know, for us to be, and like I said, we're all willing and, willing to jump on board, you know, if, if it takes for us to have to sit there and volunteer, you know, hours or put in community service somewhere with the city, you know, hey, we're willing to do it, you know, just to show that, you know, we're not there because we want to be, we're there because we have to be, you know? But there's some of us that do want to get back at life and just have to deal with the with the position that we're in now. And it, and it is a little hard to, you know, deal with, you know, when we have, you know, of course, you know, people against it, but everyone, you know, is subject to their own opinion, you know? But like I said, I totally agree with Ms. Kim, and if there's any way possible, we can push for that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll close Citizens Communications and go into items with public hearings.
Item C1 is an ordinance ordering a joint general election between the City of Victoria, Victoria County, and Victoria Independent School District on Saturday, May 7th, 2022, for the position of Mayor, City Council District 5 and City Council District 6.
Okay.
I, I need to read it in Spanish.
Oh, okay, that's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
I saw move.
You want to read the next one?
Open a public hearing first.
Oh, okay.
Anybody who wishes to speak on item C1, please approach the microphone up front. Seeing nobody rise up, we'll close the public hearing. And now, Ms. Solis?
I saw move.
Thank you.
Así muevo. Yo muevo. Secondo. Very good. My second.
All right, we have a first, primera, and a segunda.
Right.
So first and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Sí.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, item C1 passes. And item C2?
Item C2 is an ordinance ordering a joint special election with the City of Victoria, Victoria Independent School District, and the County of Victoria on May 7th, 2022, to amend the city charter.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of Council, I have no presentation scheduled for tonight. I'm here to answer any questions, but I thought I would point out to you one change in language that you had requested in our workshop two weeks ago, where in Measure C, it previously said that the term limits would apply to both current and future elected officials. The discussion was that we would amend that section to make it apply only to future terms, and that terms that started prior to this election in, in 2022 would not count towards that term limit. And so in the materials that are in the packet and the ordinance that you are adopting tonight, it now says, no elected official shall serve more than four consecutive terms, where it previously said, no current or former elected official. And we have added a sentence at the end of that measure to further clarify, the limitations in this section shall not apply to any partial or full term that commenced prior to May 7th, 2022. And I think that satisfies the concerns that were addressed in the last workshop. If there are any other questions, I'm happy to answer them tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gush. This time, I'll open the public hearing for item C2. If anybody wishes to speak on this item, please come up to the podium. Seeing no one come up and address this, the council or this item, we'll close the public hearing and entertain any motions.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for item C2's approval. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda.
Item D1 is the adoption of minutes of the January 18th, 2022 regular meeting. Item D2 is support for an affordable multifamily senior housing tax credit development located at the northeast corner of Lone Tree and Carville Street, requested by CSH Vault Consulting LLC. Item D3 is the approval, a resolution approving a contract with LJ Power Incorporated to replace the fire station number three emergency generator in the amount of $55,430. And item D4 is a, a resolution to approve a cooperation agreement with the Texas Home Collaborative to issue private activity bonds for the Odom Street Apartments. Item D5 is a resolution authorizing the filling of a grant application for, filing of a grant application for the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission for a regional solid waste grant. And item D6 is the approval, a resolution approving a license and construction agreement with Honor 361 to construct a memorial statue dedicated to the veterans of the U.S. War on Terror within Memorial Square.
I move, we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor? All right. Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries. Okay. We're going to go into action items from council. We're going to do E1, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Garza to step up and do the city manager report before we go into item E2. Okay?
Item E1 is an ordinance amending and re-adopting the traffic regulation schedules as provided in various sections of city code. This item is on second and third reading.
And just one of the changes that we wanted to make, we noticed that there was a hazmat route map that was included into the ordinance. This map is no longer necessary. It was removed back in 2017. Somehow it got put back into the ordinance, so we just want to remove that. The federal highway administration and TechDOT suggests that we remove this map. Uh, GPS is allowed to truckers to traverse the city outside and not put the hazardous materials through town. So we just want to amend it to remove that map from the ordinance.
Mayor and council, as a procedural matter, because this ordinance was adopted on first reading and is now being changed, we should clear, we should clearly adopt this as amended by the, the deletion of the section in the schedule that Mr. Gill has presented, just for clarity of the record, that we're not simply adopting the same thing that was previously adopted on first reading.
Go carefully craft the motion.
I think as amended as presented by Mr. Gill would be sufficient.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move that we accept, can we do it now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I move that we accept, uh, E1 as amended by the presentation for Ken Gill.
I second.
Okay. I have a question. So without having that, and this may be more for Mr. Gush, without having that map of the hazardous material routes, does that then say it is okay to come through the city with hazardous materials?
Can I get back to you with that answer or Mr. Gill?
I can answer that. Back, right now, it's not enforceable, and that's what was the issue back in 2017. It was, it was, it's a non-enforceable issue. And to put a hazardous route through the, or around the city, it's going to cost a couple hundred thousand dollars to get the maps out, to get the signs out, to get the presentations out. Again, we've contacted TechDOT and FHWA, and they both recommend that it's not, and it's not suggested to do all of that work. It's already in place with the trucking companies. And they, we did contact the con, tucking companies, and they agree with the same thing, that it's already in place to route those trucks around town.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. I haven't thought about this issue since 2017, when we recommended removing it. And then so I knew he would have it fresher at his fingertips than I do. The issue, the reason that we're amending it this time is because you'll remember, we amended the traffic schedule about, uh, I don't know, three or four months ago. And when the outside company that, uh, puts our ordinances online, when they were codifying this for us, they noticed this cross-reference, cross-referenced a section that no longer exists in our code. So they didn't know where to put the hyperlink, and they brought it to our attention. Since we have this in front of you already tonight, we thought it would be a convenient opportunity just to clean it up.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Discussion? And all those in favor of item E1, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Fantastic. Aye. E1 passes. And then, uh, Mr. Garza.
All right. So, um, thank you for taking this a little bit out of order. Um, we, we thought this morning when we met that it would be appropriate to take up the city manager's report item first, so that everybody, including council, gets a good glimpse of the type of work that we're in essence recommending, uh, that all city departments go through, um, as part of the action item, um, that will come after this. Um, before I ask Brian Mead to come up, I want to provide a couple, just a little bit of context to this, um, as a refresher. Um, and he'll hit on it as well. But long story short, there was a study that was done in 2018 with a different company, Dewberry, who Brian Mead used to work for, um, that came in and, and looked at our public safety, specifically the police department, um, just because of the fact that the space is inadequate. Um, from that came a recommendation, um, to move and develop a centralized public safety headquarters facility off of a property off Ben Jordan. And again, he'll hit on it as well. But ultimately, there were some key elements missing from that study, specifically, uh, what would happen to the vacated space? And I felt that it was inadequate for us to have a conversation about building a public safety headquarters facility without having any idea as to what we would do with the space that they would vacate in the building that we're in now and at city hall. It's just not robust enough conversation. And it wouldn't be wise, in my opinion, for us to proceed with a public safety headquarters and then just have a bunch of empty space that we have no idea what we're going to do with. Um, and so this version of the study does a better job at taking into account that, what would we do with the space? And you'll learn more about that in Brian's presentation. Um, and also learn a little bit about a couple of alternative options that we considered, um, as part of the review. Um, and so we feel very strongly that the, that the path that we've, we're recommending, that we go forward with, while it has many similarities to the one in 18, um, it's just much more well thought out, um, and much more well vetted, um, and more realistic in terms of its scope and cost. Um, and, and I hope that you agree. Um, and so with that, I'm going to ask, uh, Brian Mead to come up and walk through the presentation with you. I'll sit back down, but happy to answer any questions. And I'll, of course, as always, interject comments all the time.
Thank you, city manager. Um, mayor and council, I look forward to, uh, going over a few slides here. Um, and I just want to make sure this, these are the controls. All right. So as city manager Garza said, um, definitely familiar with your city back in 2018, got the opportunity to do an initial study, uh, mainly focused on the, uh, police department. As the city manager said, the update, uh, it's clear. I mean, your whole complex down here is in somewhat decent shape, but it is a 55-year-old complex, the city hall complex, which is obviously the building and the two buildings we're here. So, um, after 55 years and the changes in community policing, um, the study in 2018, as well as our current study, um, have proven in our review that the spaces are inadequate for the number of, of staff there are, for the growth, the needs, um, you know, not having onsite parking for all staff, not having the correct separation of secured and unsecured. Um, it's a decentralized concept, so having dispatch removed, having some of the functions out at the mall, having, you know, nine different locations, um, it's not as efficient as it could be. And so the study in 2018 also looked at that, but we have a lot more vetted process that we'd like to bring forward today. Again, the nine types of groups that were involved in both studies, you know, there could be up to 15-minute travel times, depending on where you are in town, getting back and forth and with the railroad tracks, so on and so forth. So there's definitely room for improvement and efficiencies. Just one quick high-level slide and graphic you may be familiar with from the study three and a half years ago. Um, it was a larger sort of master plan vision. As you can see, it was, it was two phases. It included potentially over four buildings. The scope did include not only public safety for police and fire administration, but it also looked at an indoor firing range. It looked at an indoor training building, which was number two. It also looked at fire and EMS and a whole kind of storage, a centralized storage, which was building number four, um, and all the kind of onsite training and, and stormwater detention and onsite secure parking. So it was a very, very, um, bold kind of master plan, but we realized at the price tag that it was a couple of years ago, um, and, and just the phasing of it, that it left more questions still. And, and as city manager mentioned, when, if folks did move in and when they move into a new building, what happens to the current city hall complex here? And, and that wasn't part of the scope, uh, before, which it is now. So the city manager said, um, some of the implementation efforts that were done is there was initial purchase in October of 2018 of that Ben Jordan property. And then some of the CIP conversations that have happened since then included the future other projects for consideration. And that's what we're trying to fill in some of the blanks tonight for you all. So this study, we spent over half of last year doing this, and it was updating the spatial analysis and space needs. So doing a recheck of, of right sizing the, the staff growth for all departments, um, developing additional options. So instead of just looking at a brand new, all new construction project, it was really important to look at adaptive reuse opportunities. Might there be old grocery stores or big box places in town? You know, what about the old Advocate Building? So those other creative thoughts were part of this study to look at. Um, and we also did a preliminary condition assessment, which you'll hear more about in a little bit, where we looked at life safety, ADA compliance issues of this, uh, site here. And we added the city hall complex departments that are right here. So city manager's office, city attorney, city secretary, and municipal court, so that we could start to really understand what are the needs of these four departments, um, to help answer some of those questions. So we went through this five-step process, which we would do thoroughly with the next contract, which is going to be approved tonight. And that's going through not only a space needs assessment, which we did for police department, fire administration, uh, and these four city hall departments, but we did the limited building assessments. We can understand what is the, the realistic lifespan of the building? What is the maintenance repair? Uh, some of that stuff will come later, but we wanted to understand how compliant, how much meeting code are these, the city hall complex? And then we wanted to develop the options. And then after that, we had Weaver and Jacobs come on board to do some preliminary program cost estimates that you'll see here at the end summary. So I know there's a lot of small text here and I won't read all the bullets. Uh, these are in, um, in the slide deck and summary, but I'll just give a very, very high level for each of the department and groups that were, that were vetted. So police and 911, we'll start with first. Obviously, there's four different locations that were reviewed. And based on all of the vetting of meeting with every department head, doing, uh, interviews, um, looking at our national database of when we work with municipalities across the country, what is the growth pattern for staffing based on population growth, based on caseloads? So that translates to this growth. So at least the goal of having two officers per thousand residents in Victoria was, was sort of a benchmark that we wanted to guide. So going from 130 sworn today to about 163, 166 is where we landed in this updated approach. So this was definitely a pared-back, uh, growth projection from the study three years ago. And so that staff growth, as that goes down a little bit, that obviously translates to building square footage. So we still, even though it's a smaller building than the one that was proposed in 2018, it still recommends about a 90% increase. And those are because of a lot of the goals that are listed in the bullets below. I mean, it's, it's a lot about having efficient space, having adequate space. One of the common themes in all the departments, whether it's police, fire administration, city, is, you know, staff are on top of each other. There's sometimes staff that are sharing spaces or crammed into small offices that should have their own private office for separation and security. There's a lack of separate meeting rooms. If we've learned one thing during the pandemic, um, is trying to just have flexibility in space and, and getting a little bit of separation if you have to have meetings. And, and there's really a lack of those kind of spaces. Health and wellness, I mean, tagging on to just health and safety, those kind of spaces, especially in stress-induced spaces like public safety, um, there's not a lot of that for health and wellness. There's not a proper fitness facility. There's not locker rooms for the staff. Having wellness rooms, decompression rooms, where staff can just go and take a break from a stressful situation or a call they may have been on. So all of these national trends are things that are really helping police departments around the country and that Victoria could really benefit from. Um, safer, larger interview rooms, having onsite safe and secured parking. You know, this neighborhood, the staff have to park in the neighborhood streets, and depending on the shift and when they're coming and going, sometimes it's very unsafe, and, and they feel very unsafe coming into work. So trying to have that in a, in an onsite safe campus is definitely a strong goal, uh, that we're pushing for. And-
I got a question, just for context. In 1966, when the building opened, how many sworn officers and civilians did we have?
Good question. We can get that.
Just curious.
And population too, for that matter.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Not, definitely not the 130, probably less than half that. So that's a great point, mayor. So obviously-
Mark's supposed to know that off the top of his head. You, you were here back then, right? Was it? See, there you go. 50.
50? Wow.
So that's, yeah, less than a, uh, definitely less than half, for sure.
And, and were you here back then?
I just want to make a comment. I think this neighborhood's safe.
Yeah.
I'm, uh, I, I just want to refute that, that in your presentation, that you said that the area around city hall is not felt as safe.
Yeah, correct. I do think it's different when, um, you're a public, you're a law enforcement officer, um, because you're in essence in a vulnerable, um, exposed environment, coming in and off of work and coming in and off a shift. Um, so it's more has to do with that more than, you know, a crime stat thing, right? It's more of a feeling of, you know, when you show up to work, right? I mean, you can't, you know, somebody could easily know what your personal vehicle is, right? Somebody has access to your personal vehicle. Somebody can follow you to work. Um, you know, and I'm not, and we're obviously not suggesting that, you know, we have a lot of those cases, but, you know, part of our, um, you know, objective here is to be preventative, right? Um, and so that, but keep in mind too, that PD personnel is not just uniform law enforcement officers. They have non, you know, they have non-licensed officers, um, that, you know, don't have the training, you know, to maybe defend themselves, you know, in the same way that somebody else would, right? So just, it's a different perspective.
Thank you for clarifying. It, it, it is more of that feeling targeted and not that there's a crime rate around this neighborhood.
Or vandalism on vehicles, police vehicles, you know, different things like that that can be an issue, that because they're not behind a secure area, can be an issue.
Right.
Well, and I'm not refuting that at all, but the picture that we saw a little while ago had just a big open parking lot. Maybe there was more-
There's gates. Yeah, there's, yeah, there's secure gates.
Okay.
Exactly. So thank you. Um, so fire administration, one of the goals was to be all under one roof. So there's some separation today between the fire admin offices, fire marshal, and thinking about some of the, the shared resources that could happen, shared meeting rooms, shared amenities. So the goal would be that just under 3,000 square foot of fire administrative space would come online into this, um, new centralized HQ as well. So again, easy access to customers, low maintenance, adequate storage. Those were all themes we heard in all the surveys. And then municipal court was another top, um, need kind of department, um, you know, currently, obviously right here in 3,300 square feet, including the courtroom. But that had one of the largest increases, um, when we looked at 20-year staff projections, going from five to over 14. A lot of that has to do with all of the kind of supervisor roles, uh, thinking about the, the personnel growth when you have the increased case files and, and the jurisdictions that will come on board. So really planning ahead for, uh, docket specialists, for, you know, juvenile managed case managers, you know, all of those best practices in municipal court are really thinking forward to how this department should grow. And, um, there was discussion also about potentially co-locating that with the new public safety headquarters. Um, so there's a lot of strategies and benefits that we see with co-location of municipal courts with a public safety or police project as well.
Yeah. And real quickly, go back to that, because I want to add an important point. You know, a big reason why the, such a large percentage increase in square feet is also think about the customer service aspect of the municipal court operation, right? Think of, you know, an air, like a waiting area, you know, when you have a large docket, you know, think of, you know, an area to check in to go through security, you know, that's actually separated from, you know, like windows, right? Um, so that, so that plays a big factor too in such an increase in the square footage, not just the personnel, but just so much additional square footage that ideally we should have in the existing space that we just don't.
While we're stopped, I just had a thought or a comment. You made a, a comment about, um, conference rooms and opportunities for shared conference rooms. But did you do some type of a study on not only the rooms that we have, but the use of them? Uh, I just know from personal experience in my everyday life, that, um, if a conference room is used a lot and we consolidate and say, oh, great, we have a conference room now, but if you're bringing people from different areas, you know, did you look and make sure that we've got enough conference rooms in what you're going to propose?
Yeah, that's part of it, but it's hard, it's hard to document how often a conference room is used that doesn't exist, right?
Okay.
So for example, municipal court doesn't have a conference room. They have a break room.
Okay.
So they don't have a conference room at all. They used to, but they had to split it to add an office because they grew, you know, which is where you used to have executive session, right, in a more comfortable setting. Um, so it's hard to quantify, you know, that. Um, I mean, in, it, like for instance, at city hall, especially on the second floor, you know, Thomas has a conference room, I have a conference room. You'll see later that there'll be, that, that we would recommend a shared conference room on the second floor to create more room for office space, you know, and in that instance, you know, that conference room would be used all the time. Um, so in some instances, it's easy to confirm its usage, and in others, it's hard because it could be non-existent presently.
And finding the right size, also small, medium, and large, because you never want to have a meeting with three or four folks, but you're in a super large meeting room. So I think that's a right balance too, that in our program, we are trying to find that right balance of, of the different sizes as well. So moving on to, uh, one of the other parts of this study we did in 2021 was a limited building assessment. So the facility condition assessment that Bureau Veritas will do for all 26 structures is going to be more, um, inclusive than what we did last year. But since we were focused on this city hall complex, we did some general, uh, review of, of energy codes, of life safety, of ADA accessibility compliance. energy codes, of life safety, of ADA accessibility compliance. And so even though the exterior and interior have been in general good condition, you know, the exterior, it's well maintained, a little bit of minor water seepage as we're looking around a lot of the exterior columns and the arcade. But any renovation work that's done in this building is going to require definitely updates to current code. So when we looked at the stairwells, we looked at the restrooms, we looked at all of the ramps and even your kind of old plaza with the brick steps coming up to this building and next door, all of that would really have to get probably redone to make sure that if a gut renovation is done with whatever departments come in here, that it is absolutely meeting, it's inclusive, it's accommodating to all. People that do need to use a ramp aren't feeling like second class citizens if they have to go down, you know, to the corner and come back. So it really would need that kind of effort to do the corrections to make it totally compliant. So we did then a test fit. So you saw the earlier one from three years ago, it was suggesting over 12 acres. It was four buildings, it was a much larger scope. This vetted effort is now this, we did wanted to do a generic site because we know there isn't necessarily a specific site yet. So it's often common in these studies to do a test fit to say, if you did a two story building that was, you know, 70,000 or less, if it needed this much unsecured parking and secured parking and onsite detention and, you know, maybe a new radio tower, this gives us a good roadmap to help the city determine how many acres do you need? And then you can start looking around town where you would find that. So this was a great exercise to show that we'd need at least about eight acres to get the kind of vetted program in this study. So if you bring police together, municipal courts, fire administration and nine one one dispatch, it'd be about 68,000 square feet. And you can see, you know, unsecured parking in the front, you have proper public limited access for, you know, police lobby, a municipal court wing. And then that that small dashed black line you may barely trace out, that is a six to seven foot high fence with sliding gates. So that does give the kind of physical protection of of staff vehicles. There is room for onsite growth. So when we do these master plans, we want this to be a 40 to 50 year, you know, plan. So there is room for growth. And so this was a really helpful part of the exercise. We also, as I said, we did look at some adaptive reuse options. So we looked at the old advocate building, you know, as you all probably know, that part of town, parking is a challenge, even though there's potentially some shared agreements with the church and a lot across the street. It definitely isn't up nearly to the numbers that we talked about if it was going to be a full police headquarters. This building at best would probably be worked with a decentralized concept. So instead of looking at everyone come together, we did briefly look at a decentralized concept, which means maybe, you know, investigations and patrol and dispatch, you know, some of those departments are still elsewhere. And there's more of a headquarters type decentralized location, which is all of the community serving outreach to parts of the department. So administration, you know, meeting rooms, training rooms. So at best, it would probably accommodate a decentralized concept, but there would be no room for expansion and challenges with parking. So it really didn't rise to the list for us there. Very similar to 700 North Main. Over the years, as I've gotten to know this building in your town and we're going to study it a lot more coming up, it would be a challenge for the police. Obviously, it was not purpose built, as you know, it was a it was a store and dispatches in the old, you know, automotive section. The the limited parking there in that triangular site cannot accommodate the kind of, you know, 250 to 275 staff cars. So you'd have to look at structured parking, which is often more expensive than surface parking. And, you know, it's near the railroad tracks, so we always do threat analysis too, looking at, you know, worst case scenarios with a hazardous event. So again, and and also learning from the city manager and some of your master planning downtown goals, this particular piece of property, long term, might even be more valuable than something for police headquarters. So again, for those reasons, it seemed like it maybe didn't rise to the top of the list as a as a potential location. So after we did the test fits, we thought, well, the last part of a good study of an update to study is to give you, the board and the city, a cost estimate. So Weaver and Jacob's regional contractor cost estimator helped us here, very, very high level. Obviously, we just had the program, we had the site estimate. But with that information, with the with rough conceptual site plan, if it were bid today, the construction cost would be, you know, about $26 million. But as you all know, supply chain costs escalation is really quite high right now. So we're assuming a 6% escalation per year. So if this happened, and again, this is all fluid, but working with an assumption of a timeline potentially in a couple of years, it would be construction cost just under 30 million. So again, the longer you wait, you can imagine the escalation, the price is going up. So just under 30 million for construction cost. And then when you add soft cost, you know, architectural engineering fees, the radio tower would have to be relocated with dispatch. So there's all of those other, you know, purchasing items by the city, so furniture, you know, so on and so forth. So you're up to a little over 34 million at this point for a conceptual budget. So that we thought was definitely a vetted, updated kind of information that would be very helpful for you all compared to what was in the study three years ago.
Right. And just as a recap, you know, three years ago, it recommend it, the recommendation did not include municipal court. And it was four buildings, 58, was it 58?
It was 55.
$55 million. So we've really tried to really bring it down to something that could be more manageable for us. And I think I feel very excited the fact that we've been able to do that.
Right. And have the support of police chief and deputy chief as well. So we did this and then as as city manager said, well, then, okay, if something like this were to happen, what happens with the whole city hall complex we're on today? So the last couple of slides I have shows, well, actually, we did the quick schedule. Again, this is fluid. But working with your fiscal years, the thought was if there was support and momentum moving forward, maybe at the end of this year, fiscal year 2023, there could be a design work budget approved. And then design work would take about nine months. Fiscal year 2024, potentially a construction budget would be approved and then bid towards the end of the year. And then whenever construction occurs, if it were new construction, we anticipate about a 16 month construction process. So this is just one of many potential timelines that could show going through April of 2025 for this project. So at the end of the study, we did the same thing for this, the four departments here. And so just quickly, we went through the four, we had interviews, we did tours, we vetted with all of our benchmarking of other similar sized communities. And so a quick summary, one slide per department, city manager's office, you can see the growth going from seven staff to 10 staff full time. And some of the goals here, some of these are very common goals where it's about fostering collaboration, pride, not working in silos, thinking that the best work in municipal government is done when people are working together and having spaces that really foster that kind of collaboration. Also including having better inclusion for elected officials as well, because as I've learned from the limited cramped space that you all have here, being that this double duties as municipal court and really not having a proper council chambers, a mayor's office, you know, all of the kind of spaces that we're planning for other municipalities, those are some of the goals that went into the city manager's part of the study.
Say mayor's office?
Yeah. It's typically a shared mayor city council office.
Talk about pay.
City attorney's office had very similar goals as well, talking about, you know, the future of their program and developing cooperative working relationships, you know, stronger internship programs with local higher education programs here in Victoria. So that translates to maybe some expanded staff spaces. But at the same time, realizing that they could share conference rooms with maybe the city manager's office. So you'll see a quick plan, conceptual idea of how that could be shared, but growing from four to seven staff for city attorney.
And share, you know, storage, share administrative staff, right? You know, there's the second floor at the end of the day is not that big. So it doesn't make sense for us to have, you know, one, you know, just better centralized.
That's right. And and these are meant just as high level colored graphics. So all you really need to pay attention to are the colors. So the orange kind of represents city departments, the yellow is public access and the light cream color is just, I don't want to say wasted space, but it's just your unprogrammed corridor space. So the left is current, where you total have a have a total separation of city attorney on the top, city manager's on the bottom. And so this creative idea that we worked on together is thinking about getting rid of that middle corridor and really trying to bring the resources together for city manager. And and there was some great sketching that was going on during this study as well. So that's an early idea for that.
He had the mayor's office right across from mine and I told him, move that to the bathroom. I'm like, put that down the hallway.
Go back, please. There.
Yeah, bring it back.
Is there a restroom on the second floor, a public restroom?
Yes, there'd be both. One of the consistent themes that you that you'll see is that the the design of everything new creates safe space bathrooms for staff so that staff never has to enter the public space unless they have to. That's become a thing because of active shooter situations and all sorts of other things. And so you'll notice that on the second floor, we just take one side of the bathrooms and make that staff only. And then the other side would become public.
Okay.
Exactly. Thank you. Downstairs, we had similar discussions. So city secretary growing from four to six staff, having, you know, with more staff, having better workflow to bring in potential residents for certain type of meetings, having training staff, meeting spaces, making sure that the vault that's down there is more secure. We know, we've learned there's been some water damage. How can it be more efficiently stored? I think there's an electrical panel in that space. So really making improvements that have probably been years in the making. And again, making sure that every space is ADA compliant and that it just, everything exudes the pride and professionalism that you all have in Victoria that should manifest itself in the lobby spaces and in the reception counters. So the again, the left and the right. So again, 1966 campus, you know, as as the city secretary grew, you know, there were piecemeal additions over the years. So that little bump out that you see in orange, that was obviously never part of the lobby. And so you have some of the police functions on the left, you have the divided corridor. And then city secretary, as they grew, they had to push somewhere, so they pushed into the lobby. So in an early concept on the right is to say, you know, if police move out, it starts to just give you more square footage to make those improvements and growth within city hall. So it tries to return the lobby to a little bit better, bigger lobby space, a safer space, more lines, more space for queuing, separation.
More space for events or just all types of things that you could use the lobby for?
Exactly. And city secretary would still be on the bottom, but they could truly expand further to the left into the former police space. And then another department potentially could expand to the north of that. And then all of the cream color spaces, when we think about the health and wellness and having proper large and medium sized meeting rooms, having dedicated staff safe restrooms, having a wellness room, having a space where you could even have, you'll notice these two little fingers or bridges on the image on the right. So we're thinking about, you know, I know there's the tunnel underground, but if this is truly to become an efficient city department campus on both sides, it is an interesting concept that maybe there is a public corridor going on the right side and maybe there's a secured staff on the first floor. So any city's department staff could go back and forth without going outside if it's raining or bad wind, bad weather, just as an initial concept. And this will be further vetted in the upcoming study.
And you and you'll notice if you go back, there's also things like a break room, you know, and proper break room, which we currently really don't have anywhere onsite, other than PD. PD's got plenty of break room space.
But knowing that this building has hardly any windows in it, you know, knowing the importance of just getting some natural daylighting and and that beautiful little courtyard that does exist between the two buildings, if maybe part of that could be repurposed as a staff courtyard or staff break area, if, or some of the initial ideas that came out in our.
Have to throw in there though, you know, not having windows, we struggle with that with the library and hardening all those windows. So, you know, be careful what you're asking for.
Yes.
I'm sure there's a happy medium in there.
Yeah.
We definitely don't intend to add a bunch of windows to the building because obviously it's an architectural.
Sure.
Thing. I mean, it obviously it's an awesome building. So don't think that we want to punch a bunch of windows into the building. We're definitely not suggesting that.
And then the basement, we did a before and after, just early conceptual diagrams. So the current basement under city hall, a lot of the police department spaces in blue, you do have some archive storage in the bottom right. But again, if police were able to free up that space, even though it doesn't have windows, with the proper, everything being redone, brought up to code, ADA compliance, you could get future city departments down there. And even thinking about the safety of of staff versus public spaces, with the proper controls of the elevator and maybe a stair on the right, the bright yellow could be more public access to counters. And then the left side could be more secured staff spaces. So as the city manager said, that that goal to really try to separate as much as possible staff and and public to feel comfortable.
So where are you moving the vault to?
I'm sorry?
Where are you moving the vault?
It doesn't, it won't move.
Well, you have on here future city department.
Yeah, but it does. Yeah, it doesn't. Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't think you could move that. I mean, I've been down there, so.
Well, we do, we do want to, that's conversation for another day, but April, April has a plan to try and digitalize a lot of stuff that could lessen the need for space for storage. And you'll see when he shows the other side that there's plenty of storage on the other side of the basement. Where the old jail cells are.
Exactly. So that's this ba, the basement now under here. So you can see on the left, obviously, where we are in the court courtroom, council chambers is just the mechanicals under here. And then all the old jail cells and police are in blue.
But but the vault could be repurposed. You know, there are some concerns with the vault because you have electrical components in the vault, you have pipes going through the vault. And so it makes this question, how secure is this vault? When, you know, water break can cause a bunch of water damage or the electrical panel can catch fire. So we call it a vault, but is it really a vault if it's got, you know, those risk factors associated in it? Maybe not.
I'm also in that other concept, just curious, we have the existing elevator, which you show in the public spaces, would not one be required in staff spaces?
No, you could use the same one.
So then why have separate spaces?
You could use the stairs. Or we could always move doors, you know.
But note, for ADA compliance, I mean, I'm just, think about it because if you're saying that we want to separate and just for staff safety, then that's a big cost, big ticket item is the reason I'm bringing it up.
Right.
Well, I mean, does does staff safety go to the extent that the staff never is in a public area, that they enter differently and leave differently and and never come and, you know, it seems to me that they could use the public area to get to the the private area on it.
Yeah, if they needed to use the elevator, that's how we envisioned it. You know, it is common to see, you know, employee only entrances. We kind of have that now, right? I mean, the entrance on the backside of city hall is an employee only entrance, not a public entrance, as an example. So some of that would remain. And you'll see in this one too, that we kind of put some thought into that, to the entrance that faces Bridge Street. But I'll let Brian talk about that.
Sure. New construction does have better benefits to have a double sided elevator. A lot of times we'll have a double sided elevator with key key card access. So public, they would never open together at the same time, but public could access one side, staff the other. We could do this. Adaptive reuse to add another elevator, obviously, as you said, Mayor, is a big ticket item. But that absolutely could be explored to try to to make that whole concept the most consistent about staff safety. So today, there's really just the the one elevator. So the image, the diagram on the left is today's space use diagram. So purple is obviously the court space, council chambers were in the shared, the crammed, small lobby, all the police spaces. And then the early concept on the right is showing, again, if police were able to free up the space.
And municipal court moves out.
Exactly. Then it could be, everything in orange starts to be a repurposed room. In fact, this room could even grow wider. I know there's a couple of columns, we'd have to creatively work with sightlines, but you could get almost 120 seating for 120, you could get a much larger lobby area. So we would re envision moving the restrooms from where they are now to actually a new larger restroom facility, just kitty corner there. And as city manager said before, you think about just the safety, the active shooter, the security, having a much larger queuing section where as soon as you come in, there's a whole roped off queuing area to the right. There's some seating areas, there's more video monitors where if not everyone got in the in the council chambers, you could watch it from the lobby. There'd be proper table and chair storage, there'd be a production studio for AV. Up there on the left, there'd be a dedicated council chamber. So you'd be very, very close, quick access. So we just started the tip of the iceberg of how this space, if courts moves out, could be repurposed.
And you can see a conference room that could be used for, you know, executive session, And you can see a conference room that could be used for, you know, executive session. There could be, you know, an escape door, if you will, you know, with easy access to that, which would be, you know, at that point, the recommended, you know, way to come in and out, you know, for all of you. Um, and you could see that it would be connected to the safe space of where we might be able to put other city departments, um, as well.
E- exactly.
So for example, you know, with, when we do executive session and, you know, you go, want to go somewhere else, you know, think of the logistics of, you know, us having to walk across the street. And I know nothing happens, right? But, you know, you have to plan and think about these things, especially if these are things that we want to be around in the next, you know, thirty years.
Right. I think this is the last slide. So even though, um, you know, the public safety project is probably the higher priority, we did want to go through the effort of our study, um, that just ended to say, okay, so we just looked at this campus, basement, first floor, second floor. If it was to be a gut renovation, obviously, we're not sure yet what department's going to go in what slot. But assuming that this almost forty-two thousand square feet of a campus would ha-, be brought up to code, uh, energy codes, building codes, life safety codes, um, you know, using interior market costs today for, you know, we've even looked at what's light renovation, what's heavy renovation. It thought that'd be about thirteen million dollars. And again, thinking this is a little bit longer term, if it's beyond the public safety project, we thought at least four years out. Again, we don't know a crystal ball of how escalation's going to change, but just being conservative and using six percent, which has been last year and this year, you can see how that jumps another couple of millions. So it just, again, these are what these studies are for. It's just for you all to really start thinking about the future and start planning what kind of dollars might be needed for different projects. And I think with that, it was just saying again, if, if the design work was maybe approved fiscal year twenty twenty-five, the design work for renovation might be in a six to seven month period. And then the next fiscal year twenty-six, the budget, budget could be approved, and then it would be a two-phase project renovations. You know, you can imagine people moving from one side to the other, but that this project could go through twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, just as one example.
One, one question I had, either the analysis has been done or there's proposed to be done on either one of these projects, that if they were to come to fruition in this form, some other form, whatever it looks like, has there been any analysis done in terms of operational costs and how those would be affected by these new spaces, these new designs, bringing things around? I, and I'm talking about both short term and long term, because that's all part of that consideration.
Yeah, we're still trying to finalize some of that, um, because you're absolutely correct. And obviously with the public safety building being priority, that's our priority in trying to figure out. Because we do envision some shared services being within the public, um, safety headquarters building that currently don't exist. So for example, it would make sense to have an embedded IT person, you know, there, you know, full time, right? It would make sense to have, you know, an embedded communications, you know, team with public safety. And so there would be other departments that would be impacted, um, in terms of staff increases. And then obviously we need to take a look at, you know, obviously the basics, right? Maintenance, security. Um, and so that's something that we're definitely, um, in the middle of, of trying to plan out. Um, and we think that, or not think, but obviously because some of these things take a few years, once we develop the plan, our approach would be to obviously steer step into it, right? Um, so that we don't feel the hit just all of a sudden, you know, in fiscal year twenty-five or twenty-six, we've been strategic in slowly but surely increasing some of those line items to help prepare us for that. But that's definitely, we're very conscious of that, um, and we're in the middle of that. But also think that, remember that some of these, um, things are coming offline, right? So for example, we're moving the fire department away from, you know, the building on airline, right? So there's a savings there. We'd be taking police department away from the mall. And granted, those expenses aren't a lot, but, you know, you remove that. And so it's, it's, it's trying to figure all that stuff out that we're still trying to figure out.
And that's one of the questions I have. Uh, if you're going to move the fire in there, what happens to airline?
Yep, great question.
Uh, what happens, the fire marshal comes out of five, station five? Is that where the fire marshal is? I mean, that's not included in this.
Correct. Well, station five's an easy one because station five needs to be relocated. And so, and so fire marshal's office leaving station five is very easy because at, when they would be timed to design and actually move station five, then you just don't account for the fire marshal's office. So that, that plan's very easy. The, the one on airline gets a little bit trickier because of the presence of a, a well that we have on site. Um, and so that would necessitate a little bit more work. Um, we have thought, well, um, maybe it makes sense to, you know, sell that off or whatever, right? Especially with UHV's growing its presence, you know, almost across the street. But we would be ne-, we would need to be sensitive to, um, the utility piece. Um, we're in the middle of trying to, um, address making some improvements to some of the ground storage tanks that are on site that may or may not necessitate additional property. So there's a chance that that property simply just we retain for purposes of utility.
Another question I had was, uh, this is a public safety, it's, everything's together. When you have done studies for other cities, is that a trend now? Because in the, obviously in the past, fire was here and this police station was here and.
It, it is. A lot of times colocation helps. Um, it, it's a win-win because sometimes it, it helps with, um, culture building and efficiencies of doing operations, but it's a win-win when we talk about operations and facilities. Because, um, I know the diagram we showed was really early suggesting, well, maybe there was, you know, two separate lobbies. Like there was a true public safety, police lobby, and then a separate municipal court lobby. But sometimes on the inside, we actually have a connecting lobby where it goes to like a shared restroom or a shared set of meeting rooms. So if they were two separate buildings, you might have to do those redundant program items. So it is a trend we're seeing so many municipalities take as, as cost-saving measures, but it also really helps bring, uh, staff together.
Thank you.
I have a question. On airline, is it just the admin office that you're going to move? Because don't we have a fire station there?
Uh, yes, that gets used for storage and there's a fitness center in there. And so some of those components would be, would shift over, right? Like fitness center. Um, so the new public, the new combined building accounts for that. Um, we've, we, our game plan is to create the storage for the fire department behind station one. Um, and so ultimately, some of that storage that the fire department uses that site for would shift to station one.
Okay, I understand, but the fire station itself, doesn't it provide for some?
It, it's not an active fire station.
It's not?
No, it simply just gets used, it simply just gets used for storage of apparatuses.
Okay.
Yeah. And mobile command unit and things like that. Um, but the idea is that that type of storage moved to station one, since station one's actually manned twenty-four seven, versus right now, when those apparatuses are needed, uh, nobody's manned at that station. So it takes up precious minutes, you know, to have to send somebody to mobilize there, to pick up something, to then take it somewhere. Versus if it was just right behind, you know, where there's somebody twenty-four seven, it's just much more efficient.
Any other questions?
Okay. Well, the only thing I will add is that it was a, a more robust process than we're giving off to be. There's a final report, um, that's pretty lengthy that we're in the process of finalizing where you'll be able to see, you know, the questionnaire that was presented to all the different departments, the answers, you know, a lot of the rationale behind some of these staff projections, right? So when you see, you know, like city manager's office go from like seven to nine or whatever it was, you know, you could see what, you know, positions those were over the next twenty years. So just greater detail. Um, and that's why we wanted to go through this presentation first, because it's that level of detail that every other department would go through, so that ultimately we can have a master plan of identifying, um, when we need more space, um, and how we're going to achieve, um, having more space for the different departments.
So this next phase that we'll get into on E two would say, okay, here's what we have for all the other departments. Here's the space at seven hundred main, here's the space at the public works building, your space at parks department building.
Right.
And possible future space around here.
Right. And we do have a few slides, kind of summarizing all of the different areas that would be looked at, um, that we can transition to if y'all are ready for that. Okay. Any other questions on this? The only other thing I'll mention is that, you know, we do plan on continuing the conversation. So we do plan on revisiting this as part of the CIP conversation. Because obviously we're recommending that we, you know, proceed with this, with this project until we're told not to. Um, so we're continuing to push.
And FGMA has a grant program?
I'm sorry?
FGMA has a grant-
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, they do. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They can help find money.
It's a ninety-five, five percent match. Yeah. Um, anyway, well, thank you all so much. I know this project has been, you know.
One more thing though.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I understand the study of the space we're fixing to abandon or move or switch, but we really don't need to let that extra study we're doing delay the public safety headquarters building. It, it's, it's needed and we know that. And now these extra studies we're doing, I, I don't, I would hate to see it, uh, uh, delay the construction start of this. It's, it's just, it's something we need to get on now.
Agreed. And it's not our intention to hold up the public safety headquarters conversation. Um, that's why we separated them. That's why we did this one first, because we knew that this was priority, especially coming in as the new city manager, right? I, I knew that this topic was sort of lingering because of the study that was done in twenty eighteen. So it was very evident to me that it's a priority of council, um, because, or else that study in twenty eighteen would have never even happened, right? So, um, that's why we prioritize this. And so the one that's the action item next, which would take, you know, several months to complete, in no way, shape or form would slow this process down. So as soon as our, um, council workshop in March, we plan on, you know, bringing up some of these components. So for example, we talk about trying to plug in, you know, cost for design in fiscal year twenty-three, you know, we plan to try and have a conversation about that. You know, we talk about funding construction for something like this, you know, in fiscal year twenty-four. Well, we want to have a conversation with you about the options on how we think we can do that. Um, and so all of that, you know, can begin as soon as March.
That would be great.
So, great. All right. April, can you read the next, the action item?
Yes, sir. Action item E two is the resolution to approve a contract with FGM Architects Incorporated to perform the City Victoria Facility Condition Assessment, Usage Study and Master Plan in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Um, just for context, a couple of comments. Um, about a year and a half ago, we went through an RFQ process for architectural services. Um, we have in general, just been better about doing RFQ processes for, for services. And, and as part of that, um, FGMA responded. At the time when Raleigh, Raleigh was mayor, um, RMA did not respond, um, to the RFQ for obvious reasons. Um, and so when we, um, approached FGMA, um, about this study, um, we included RMA and asked that they include RMA, um, in this process because we were very cognizant of the fact that, you know, we have a good reputable architectural firm in town, um, that just because of the circumstance of Raleigh being mayor, didn't get a chance to formally submit an RFQ. And so we intentionally worked with FGMA and RMA, um, to find a way to, um, get them involved with this. And I think it's important to verbalize that because I do agree that when you have a localized professional, um, service, that, you know, y- you try and get them involved as much as possible. And so that was very important for us leading into this process. And obviously, we're going with FGMA and RMA. So FGMA's proposal was the only one that partnered with RMA. So you can imagine, they thought very good about it. They were smart.
I have a, a question. Um, we've just seen a great presentation. Um, I see this agenda item. I'm having trouble being able to verbalize the difference, the distinction between what we just saw, which looks at first blush like the result of what we're now going to, to approve, to have created. Uh, so can, can you explain how this study is going to be different from?
Yeah. Well, I think once we go through the few slides, I think it'll become clear.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great question. It, it's all just about scope. Um, but you're right, we're going to go through a very, very similar, um, process. So as city manager said, the core team is FGM Architects, RMA. Um, we've been, you know, getting to know them, knowing over the history, the, the projects that they've done in town that have, are on this study, so it made a lot of sense. Um, for the library project, seven twenty design, you'll see a whole slide on Maureen, Maureen Arnt, um, out of Dallas, uh, has done over three hundred projects, is part of our team. Bureau Veritas, um, uh, the national firm you're going to see a slide on. And then Weaver and Jacobs is our core team. S- supporting team, if needed, we have a whole bunch of regional or local, uh, MEP engineers, civil, structural. If there's things after, towards the end of the study, uh, in terms of the list for repair or maintenance that needs deeper research than what Bureau Veritas would do, we have an on-call team that has been vetted and has worked on community projects all here regionally. So the first phase, um, Bureau Veritas is definitely a national and world leader in inspection, certification services. They have a whole, um, part of their division on doing these sort of facility assessments. So some of the key things that you will be getting from this, um, I think it's going to really help set, uh, the tone for expenditures and maintenance, repair schedules, and helping to prioritize that over the coming years. So they're going to help develop that capital expenditure plan. They're going to look at rehab budgets and scope. Um, they will develop this facility condition and sec-, uh, index for all twenty-six buildings. So basically, they're going to take, uh, the estimated repair cost and divide that by the building replacement value. So you can imagine if it's going to cost more to repair than to replace it, you know, the, the higher that index number, the more, um, it's probably good to start looking at another facility. But you're going to have that important index. Um, there's going to be maintenance schedules. There will be a digital, uh, file here that will be working closely with the building services group in Victoria. Um, they'll be maintaining that for at least five years. So, um, it's a very important part of, I think, um, the capital planning for the community. And, and as I've been learning from Roger and Jesus and others, it's, it's something that I know that a lot of folks have been looking forward to for a very long time. So we're excited to, to bring Bureau Veritas onto our team to really guide what is called phase one of the three-phase study. So this is-
Real quick, can you go back?
Yes.
Because I want to provide some context. So prior to two years ago, our building maintenance person was James, our IT director, right? No offense to James, but my point is, we did not have a structured, intentional effort going towards building maintenance. So two years ago, one of the first moves that happened, um, right after I got here was the creation of the Building and Equipment Services Department, where we promoted Roger. And so something like this would be extremely beneficial for Roger and his team, um, to help us just be more intentional with developing maintenance schedules and things of that sort. And so if you're, you know, hearing this and thinking, gosh, why, why doesn't the city, you know, already have this or, you know, or whatever? Well, again, up until two years ago, our IT director was our facility maintenance guy.
He did a super job.
Yeah, he did a high. But in any case, I just want to provide that context because this piece would be instrumental in helping us take that next step in our just facility maintenance operation.
And then just a one highlight slide on seven twenty design. So, uh, Maureen Arnt has worked with over three hundred public library clients and projects, many of them in the state of Texas here. Um, so she would be guiding that specific library part of the programming and master planning vision. Um, so these are a couple of the projects that Maureen has recently worked on. So as I said, um, hopefully we're kicking it off this month. It's a three-phase study duration. We're going to take us through the end of the fiscal year, so end of September. Um, phase one is the facility condition assessment of twenty-six city structures. So, um, so one of the questions you would ask about what's the difference, these twenty-six city structures, um, include, uh, well, it's a full facility condition assessment.
We have a list of them.
Ex- exactly. That's the next slide. You'll see. Phase two is the space needs assessment of ten buildings. And then phase three is the master plan test fit of seven of those buildings or groups. So the twenty-six city structures, um, are all listed here. Um, only a couple of them, so you can see in the second column, there's the city hall building, police, municipal courts, nine-one-one dispatch. You know, those couple buildings that were part of our current study, when it comes to a true facility condition assessment, as I said in the previous kind of report, we just did high level, um, we weren't looking at the life, um, you know, all the mechanical units and how much life they have left in them, all of the repair schedules. We were just looking at life safety and a few things. So this is where Bureau Veritas will do that thorough facility condition index for all twenty-six structures, which will be a great roadmap, um, and, and we'll coordinate with them. And then phase two is the space needs assessment. So everything we talked about in the, in the final, in the previous presentation, where we go through, uh, meeting with the key department heads, we do the surveys, the tours, we go through and develop a space needs program. These are the ten buildings or groups that you see on the slide that will be part of this, this year's effort. Um, so you can see those that are included, including the library, seven hundred North Main, Public Works. Uh, and when the library is done, again, Maureen will be totally guiding this, but the library process that she goes through will have a tremendous amount of stakeholder involvement. So there's going to be tours of the existing library, uh, given by staff. There'll be community engagement sessions, there'll be council, mayor interviews and meetings, uh, one-on-one. There'll be surveys. There's a whole process that will be gone through with, uh, the library itself, so that there's a really vetted, um, programming effort that has a lot of consensus and buy-in from community, from you all. So we know that's very important. And then finally, phase three will be about a two and a half months. So after we have the foundation of, okay, how much do each of these departments, city departments or library need? When we try to look out twenty years, what kind of spaces do they need? Once we have that sort of foundation, then- Once we have that sort of foundation, then we move into Phase Three, and we start doing these test fit master plan diagrams. So, for example, the library, does the library, you know, is it able to expand in place there? Or does it move somewhere else? Seven Hundred North Main, do we look at that still staying viable for city departments, or does that eventually get phased out to something else? The City Hall Complex site, we just showed you a few minutes ago, just a bunch of empty orange boxes, not knowing, well, what's going to go downstairs, or what's going to go next door? By the end of this Phase Three, we'll have a lot more of those questions answered after we go through all of those groups. So I think, you know, after that's finished, there'll be, hopefully, a really good roadmap for how you can move forward with, with all of these departments.
And, and visualize the, I guess, the ripple effect that, that happens, right? So we do the public safety headquarters facility first, meaning PD moves out of City Hall Complex and Municipal Court. Then it's time to, you know, look at who comes into this complex, right, which more than likely would mean moving some departments from Seven Hundred Main over to this complex, right? And of course, my priority would be the administrative departments, to be closer to administration, right? Finance, HR, communications, public affairs, which then in turn creates square footage opportunities at Seven Hundred Main for the remaining departments to potentially expand there, right? So there's this ripple effect of things that happen that obviously will take, you know, twenty years or however long, you know, to fully be, be, you know, happen, but I think it's important to start just getting a glimpse as to what that looks like, because as I've mentioned before, and I mentioned at the last council workshop, that over the last thirty years, the city has been blessed to have Seven Hundred Main and not really have to worry about it. Because as city grew, city departments left City Hall and went to Seven Hundred Main. And we just recently just, you know, BDC was the last, you know, non-city tenant to be there, and they're no longer there because we needed the space, you know, for city staff. So we need a new strategy on how we're going to house, house our personnel and related to city facilities over the next thirty years, because we don't have another building like Seven Hundred Main that we could just move people to in a, on, on an ad hoc basis, the way that we have the last thirty years.
Got a question in regard to the library phase, seeing as the county currently owns the space, the building.
Right.
We have an inter-local agreement with them, and they have to supposedly pay for X amount or fifty percent over a certain cost.
Right, threshold, which I think is a hundred thousand, right? Yeah.
Correct. I just want to know how that works in with everything that we're going to talk about.
Well, we would definitely invite them to be part of the conversation, you know, and, and give them an opportunity to participate. So that's definitely how we're, how we're approaching it, you know, at this point. I mean, we recognize that, you know, for any, you know, large capital expenditure that may or may not come, you know, associated with this, you know, would necessitate engaging the county, but that's why we feel that incorporating them, you know, early on in the process would give us, you know, an opportunity to get the support to fund the projects.
Just want to make sure that they're on board early on.
Absolutely, that's our intention, for sure. And if we run into any, you know, issues, we can address them, you know, when they come up, but I think at this point, you know, what's appropriate is to include them at the beginning, give them an opportunity to be engaged, as well as the community, and then, and then see how it all plays out.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. And I, and I will briefly mention that this library process will, will run in tangent with an update to a strategic plan for the library. If we think about all the departments that we have that have high encounters with the public, the library is, is obviously at the top of the list. And so it's important for us to have a robust process for the library, because it, we touch a lot of members of the public through the library operation. And so that's why we wanted to bring in, you know, an expert to really help spearhead that conversation, and we think the time is appropriate, because that strategic planning conversation will not only include, you know, the physical elements of the library, but also programming, you know, things like books, you know, so many other things that I know have been talked about recently that could be, you know, part of the conversation as part of an update to the library strategic plan.
I have a different question. Is state, Fire Station Three on Airline, is that on the list?
We intentionally, is that the one we intentionally left out? Where'd Chief go?
It's there.
Oh, no, it's there. There was one that we intentionally left out.
Fire Station One.
Station One.
Yeah.
That's the one in Goodwin, right?
So face, Station Three.
The one we're getting ready to...
Station Three's on Lone Tree.
Station One's just right here downtown.
Yeah, Station One. That's the one that's going through, that's going to go through, through a rehab, if we can, if we can get the price right.
So which is, so the one on Airline, whatever its number is, is on this list?
I'm sorry?
The one on Airline, whatever its number is.
Yeah, it's on there.
Somebody said three was Lone Tree, I'm not sure.
It's the old Fire Station Number Two and Fire Administration Office, so the first two bullets are on Airline, and they are all included in Phase One for the facility condition assessment.
And that's a good point. I mean, we can actually consider, you know, even pulling those out if, you know, if we get, you know, full support from council for the public safety headquarters building, I mean, it probably won't make sense in wasting time or money reviewing those two buildings if we know they're going to become irrelevant, you know, in a few years. So that's a good point, we can look at that, we can have that conversation around that.
All right. Any further questions?
Only other comment I'll, I'll make, if it's, if it's all right, real quick, we, we added Office of Emergency Management, you know, to your point, Dr. Young, we recognize that operation's also a city-county operation, and so we, you know, Rick and, and they're on board too, you know, with that.
Thank you.
But they would stay down there on the old telephone building, right?
I don't know, because, you know, part of the, part of the process that everybody will go through, including OEM, is trying to visualize, how do you envision being five years from now, ten years from now, twenty years from now? And there's only so much square footage in the basement down there, and so, for example, he recently, he being Rick, recently hired a new staffer, and they're having to shrink the room that we use for press conferences that they use as a classroom, they're having to shrink that to add an office for the new staffer, right? So even something as simple as that, you know, they just don't have room for.
Does something like that, I mean, should that be considered for Police Fire Headquarters Building?
Great question. We've talked about it, and so part of the reason why our preference is to eventually land a piece of property that might be bigger than the eight acres is intentional in case there are opportunities to build something, you know, that would make sense to be on site.
Okay. Well, thank you, appreciate you coming here and presenting that to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. So need a motion to move forward with item E2 or to disapprove it?
Move. We move forward with action item E2.
Thank you. Got a motion to adopt? Got a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, motion E2 carries. We've already done our citizen, our city manager report, and so we will recess for, oh, let's give it ten minutes, and then about six forty-five, six forty-six, we'll reconvene for executive session.
The City Council recessed for executive session on the first day of February twenty-twenty-two at six thirty-six PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows, executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four, and also Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two, and Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-eight-seven.
No, no, here's another one.